I call the order of the Board of Education meeting on November 20th, 2017. Please rise to the plate.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice in common.
Kelly, roll call please.
Ms. Lynn?
Delayed.
Ms. Suer? Here. Patton?
She's delayed.
Delayed, I'm sorry. I was ranking now.
Mr. Kaski?
Here.
Mr. Sang?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Delayed.
Mr. South?
Here.
Skadston?
Here.
Here.
Dr. Lindell, front exits?
Uh, exits are in the back of the LGI.
Okay. And we have a presentation of a... So representatives of the Beacon Professional Association will present a check to the Beacon High School student.
Hello, my name is Mel Martin. I'm proud to be a part of the teaching assistant family here at Beacon City School District. Our fellow TA, Ruthie Pango, has an amazing daughter named Jaylen, who many of us have had the pleasure of knowing. Jaylen is an amazing seventeen-year-old Beacon High School student who has been living with spinal muscular atrophy, SMA type two, which confines her to wheelchair, sorry. For years, her family has used a trailer attached to their vehicle to transport Jaylen's wheelchair. She has been lifted in and out of her chair every time she needs to travel. This family needs help acquiring a wheelchair-accessible van to help Jaylen feel more independent and alleviate the family's need to travel with her wheelchair outside of their vehicle. Jaylen is an amazing young lady who, regardless of her disability, is always upbeat and is an inspiration to us all. She's a true warrior who continues to fight the fight by never letting SMA keep her down.
With teaching assistants, I'm Sonal Letley, president.
Ms. Pango, vice president.
And here at Beacon, we'd like to show support and we're proud to present Ruthie and her family with a check of a thousand dollars.
And for any more, Javelin could be here, but she wanted me to mention that the National Junior Honor Society is also helping on Jaylen's journey to raise more money, and they're having a fundraiser at Outback Steakhouse on Sunday, December 3rd, from eleven to two, and we left flyers over here for anybody who's interested and to announce the way of it.
I see.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you still have t-shirts left, Ms. Pango? Are you still selling t-shirts?
Um, no, I'm not.
Okay. Thank you very much, and it shows the dedication to the staff here at Beacon, so we do appreciate you going above and beyond, and it shows what type of staff we're looking for in Beacon and what type of staff we have here. So we really do appreciate it, and the students always benefit, so thank you very much. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of our particular individuals, to discuss matters made exempt by federal and state law, family educational rights and privacy per court, and seek legal advice from the school attorney, state law, attorney-client privilege, and the board will return as soon as possible. Meredith, I need to...is there a second? Mike, conference of questions?
Just open.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried seven...no. Alright.
Six of us.
Six, I'm sorry. Alright, I'd like to recall the meeting to order. We do have...is this...we do have two changes to the agenda. One is eleven point oh-one. It's an addendum to the resolution, which is...it was printed on the agenda prior to being...printed, correct? It was printed on the agenda prior to being printed. Which was be it resolved that the Board hereby affirms the placement employee number thirty-six thirty-one and paid initially for the penalty of disciplinary investigation beginning November seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. We also have another resolution or addendum to the agenda. We're gonna call it Resolution eleven twenty seventeen C. And that reads, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District does hereby affirm the superintendent's decision and suspension of student number one-one-one-five-one-seven issued pursuant to an educational law thirty-two fourteen superintendent's hearing. Does anybody else have any corrections to the agenda?
Corrections?
Or additions that we saw? Alright, any student or school presentations? Any parent groups? Open to the public. Superintendent's report.
Alright, we...I'm just gonna jump over here briefly because part of the superintendent's report tonight, we have a seven-minute movie about the Capitol project, and it just got finished, so I wanted to...I wanted to show that. So I'm gonna start with that, and then I'll just have a couple other brief things to share. Here we go.
I think as a Board of Education, we need to have opportunities and make more available opportunities for the students and staff of the district. I'm hoping, and I think the rest of the board would agree with this, that this project is going to be the first step towards that.
One of the beauties of this project this year is that it'll have no impact on the taxpayer. We are doing the project at a time where the debt service for the district is low enough that we can add a project of this size without impacting the local taxpayer. So that's why the Board, the Board Facilities Committee and administration are bringing it forward at this time.
So the Facilities and Operations Committee took into account the building condition survey that was done by our architects and really put a plan together that addressed any health and safety issues in our school, any educational environments we really needed to improve, such as our science lab and some of our elementary classrooms, and also include the turf field, which will greatly improve the flexibility of our athletic program and also benefit the community.
Some safety and accessibility upgrades that will be addressed in this project is ADA upgrades in almost every school in the district, as well as fire safety upgrades. The bathrooms are not currently ADA accessible. The upgrades will address accessibility for the disabled. We're going to be installing fire assemblies that will block smoke from rising to the next level in stairwells, in corridors, and areas of refuge. They're critical to make sure that they are up to date for both fire and ADA code.
Since I began here three years ago, it's been a big hit, and all the students, of course, really love cooking and eating everything they make, so to have an updated kitchen is gonna really maximize their learning and will be able to make even more things than we have in the past. It's definitely going to be an improvement for me, as well as the students, in terms of how I'm able to teach the class, so anything that helps it run more smoothly is always an added plus.
Currently, the students in the eighth-grade advanced program are taking LER regions, and this is our lab setup. They're working at individual group tables, but in order to use resources such as water and electricity at their stations, they have to move around the room to get those resources.
I think that the experience is completely different for the students that take living environment regions here at the middle school versus the students that are taking it at the high school. The infrastructure up at the high school allows students to not only complete the labs that are required by New York State, but to do them in a more efficient and effective manner.
On our second-floor classrooms, we currently don't have air conditioning, and if you come here on a hot day in the fall or early spring, it is brutal up in those rooms by the end of the day, and to teach during that or learn during that really isn't an option.
Both the boys' and girls' locker rooms need to be completely gutted and changed. We started the facility with light-gauge metal, and metal and water after fifteen years don't work out very well, it's rusted out, so we would like to change those to composite lockers. We would like to put in twice as many lockers by cutting the lockers in half, so we'll have more space for visitors and for our athletes in the locker room. The pool's biggest needs is a new timing system. The timing system that we have now is sixteen-years-old, is original to the complex. Most times, these timing systems are designed to go for about seven to ten years, so we're probably double...we're past its lifetime basis.
Our track is now twelve-years-old since two thousand five. It was the last time that it was replaced, and it was fully replaced in two thousand and five. The life expectancy of the surface of a track is ten to twelve years, so our track is pretty much right in the era of needing to be resurfaced. If it doesn't get resurfaced, the problem is the top begins to disintegrate, you get cracks forming, you get water into the cracks, it freezes over, it opens up larger cracks, and it starts to destroy the underlayment, which is a pavement.
Just for the fact to be able to rely on this field on a daily basis and to know that whether it rained a night before or a week before, that the field will be ready to play, it's a great benefit to the athletic programs that we have.
For soccer specifically, it's a huge advantage. I mean, the vast majority of teams that we play against are on turf, it's a much more consistent surface, it just kinda levels the playing field for us.
It would've been beneficial to have a turf field last year because we had a sectional game, and it was supposed to be home, but it got rained out because the grass just couldn't handle the rain, so we had to actually go to Lord's, which had turf.
As a soccer player, it would be weathered flat surface, which is huge in soccer, no divots in the field, if it rains, you could play in the rain. Environment-wise, I think it would change too. People love to go on turf.
Due to the fact that the space and the safety of the space would allow for us to pretty much do any activity at any time, take some of our inside stuff, move it outside, and allow for maximum participation, therefore hopefully creating a healthier high school student.
Right now, with soccer being such a popular sport in the city of Beacon, we need more fields, and this one field would be like having four or five fields, because the amount of play could be on it, and it won't get beaten up because it's turf, like a grass field does when you overplay on it, and it would just be a great benefit to the community and to the high school.
Bringing the community in to allow access to the field, it's gonna benefit everybody, and ultimately, it's gonna make us...give us better programs athletically here in Beacon. The goal would be to be able to work hand-in-hand with lights in the near future as well. We'd really be able to extend the amount of usage of this field to allow the community on, you know, as much as possible.
If the vote passes in December, we will submit plans to the State Education Department, and we will do a bidding process in either late two thousand eighteen or early two thousand nineteen, and the work will be done in the summer of two thousand nineteen.
Most of it will be able to happen when kids are not in our schools, and we'll get most of it done that summer. We'll be having to do a little bit of additional work in the fall after that summer, but most of it will be complete summer of two thousand nineteen. That's it. So, a huge thanks to Mike Gersh. He and some students put that together for us. He is the media teacher at the high school. We originally were thinking that it would just be a couple minutes, but we then started to think about all the people that the project impacted, and when we started listing out all those interviews, we thought it'd be a more powerful piece to kind of get a wide breadth and deep depth...okay, I should stop talking. But, you know, get a good array of people talking about the project, so we hope to be able to post that tomorrow, so I wanna get a superintendent's blog out tomorrow, and we'll put it on the website and put it on YouTube and stuff, so that...just with the Capitol update, Capitol project update, that's going out. We've had now seven meetings out in the public, six PTO, one just sort of general public meeting at Beacon Rec last week. In those seven meetings, we've talked with over a hundred and fifty people about the Capitol project, which has been great. We've had great conversations in all of the meetings. We have one last meeting, November thirtieth. It will be our last community meeting. It'll be right here in this room at Beacon High School, seven o'clock, Thursday, November thirtieth. I was thinking about it, but decided to rule out coming to people's houses on Thanksgiving to talk about the Capitol project, so I will take the week off. It felt a little weird to not be doing a Capitol presentation this week, but it's really exciting, and again, the vote is Tuesday, December fifth, from seven in the morning till nine at night. And just a couple shout-outs about the arts. We had a wonderful mural. A mural project happened at Rombaut Middle School, eighth graders, working with mural artist Joe Pimental, I think I'm getting his name right. Did a mural, you can see it if the lights are on when you drive past the gym, Rombaut. It's just really great and beautiful, and they used the Art Coaster money to fund that. And then just the last one was the Beacon Players Cinderella. I saw it Friday night, know a lot of other people here did too. It's just, I won't go on about it, except that it was just amazing, and just congratulations to all the folks involved, all the students involved. It was really quite a production in a great way. For me to see my first Beacon Players, to see that, it was great, so thank you all. Yeah?
Have you thought about putting it on the Black History TV channel, Channel twenty-two?
Oh, yes, we're gonna do that too, sorry. Yep, yep. I will make sure to stay away from that channel myself, 'cause seeing my head on the...for some reason, I feel like I'm really big on the screen, and it would probably scare the people in my house. But yeah, we're gonna get it up there. Craig?
I have to second those comments about the Cinderella production by Beacon Players, which is another great client for this fine organization. I think the public may not realize that there's a lot of community involvement behind the scenes. There are perhaps a dozen parent volunteers who help in some way with bringing their expertise as advisors and helpers for the students and working with them, as well as staff members, and it produces results. Some of the wardrobe magic that happened on stage was really quite remarkable, and that's kind of like a professional level of stuff that's going on. And then they managed to source a very beautiful chariot for bringing in the star, and it just carried itself very well with a very smooth production level of behind-the-scenes work and on-the-stage work. Some great voices among the students who are doing these fairly demanding singing roles, very impressive. I wanted to say that we've made some real progress on the project we know as the Beacon Wind Residency. We actually have scored what would appear to be a good bit of money from a private foundation. This is going to be able to bring in a program into the high school in which a performing wind ensemble will work with students in the music program. The Howland Chamber Music Circle had a line on a foundation that likes to give a startup grant to a new program, and was advised that we would get three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Other grant applications are in the works, and we have our fingers crossed that we'll be able to actually put a whole program together for a couple of semesters. So moving along, and that's all I have for tonight.
Kristen?
I...so the wellness committee meeting, a committee met last week, or was it two weeks ago? This is feeling...anyway. Two weeks ago. Okay. It's all blending together. And we covered a lot of bases, had a really productive discussion around what is realistic to put in the policy, and what we can accomplish, and then what's aspirational. We also scheduled our family fitness night for March second, and I believe the next meeting, I have to confirm, is December sixth. I think it's the day after the Capitol project. Right?
What was December sixth?
December sixth is our next committee meeting.
Okay.
And Dr. Lindell is kind of picking up the ball, and he's going to, you know, close out some of these open-ended policy issues, and we should have something that we can bring forward. Promising it for a year or so, if it happens. And I just wanna say about the video that was produced to, you know, explain the Capitol project, it's so great because it's something that I've still been getting questions about of people who can't make a meeting or who can't, and then, you know, for whatever reason, see a presentation and still haven't quite taken it all in. It's so helpful for them to see the physical space, also hear the thought that went into it and what the goals are, and to be able to share it. I feel like it's personally gonna save me a lot of coffee meetings, I promise to have with people about that project, and it's just such a great form of communication, so thank you guys so much for doing that. And also, I'd like to echo the congratulations about the Cinderella performance, building up for the community engagement piece. They did a small kind of capsule performance at the library last week, when there was a day off school, and it was, you know, a packed house, and it was really amazing to see lots of little kids, you know, interacting with all these, you know, girls came dressed in princess dresses, and they were like just two feet from the performers, and it was a really nice...a really nice thing for them to do, and the kids loved it, and it was great to hear the songs again. So that's, I think that's all I have.
Can we just go back to family fitness, you said was March?
March second.
Second.
It's my birthday, Anthony, if you wanna just also put that in.
No, I'm definitely not gonna remember.
I'll remind you.
Georgia?
I also attended the Cinderella performance, and, you know, the students were amazing. I always enjoy attending the plays. The policy committee meeting met on Wednesday, November fifteenth. We are...there'll be policies for our first read brought forward on December eleventh at that board meeting. We're finalizing some information about field trips, a field trips policy, as well as relooking the policy on executive session, although it was adopted in March. There were some changes by our e-server, so a policy server, so there's a couple of additions that need to be made, and we're hoping maybe there would be something with the wellness policy moving forward on December eleventh as well. So I could...so I'll speak more to that again at the next board meeting. We are not having a policy committee meeting in December. Our next policy committee meeting is on January seventeenth at eight fifteen, the district office.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you.
So I want to also say that thank to Mr. Gersh for organizing the video, and all the people who participated in coming together. I think it really looks great, and hopefully we'll be able to do that for other things. It really gets, I think, people together as a district and community to, you know, behind the school, so that was excellent. Also, was not able to attend Cinderella, we were away for the weekend. Wondering if maybe in the future they could have, you know, maybe two weekend performances or something to help people that are just not around for the weekend, but I heard it was fantastic. We had a Facilities and Operations Committee meeting on the thirteenth, and I won't go over anything with the Capitol project, you know, it was already spoken here, but there is the upcoming meeting, it's Thursday at the high school, which will be another opportunity to ask questions, learn more. I did get a flyer home as well, so we should be...we should be able to get the flyers in the mail, too.
Yeah, I received mine.
Which is a good thing. You know, and the vote is, of course, on December fifth, and we have our next community meeting on the sixth, hopefully to, you know, work on the next step. Some of the highlights from our meeting, we have the facilities director gives us actually written, you know, highlights of things that are...that they're working on, so I was just gonna mention some of them here. Remember last year, we had some of the lead remediation in Sargent and Glenham, some of the schools? So they did work to replace, you know, some of the valves and piping and all that, and did some retesting, and they still had some areas that showed some elevated leads, so those sections are still, you know, isolated, valves are still closed while they go and figure out, you know, look at the testing again and what has to happen for those areas. There was also, they were doing some air quality testing in high school, in the guidance area, so testing, you know, was done, and the results are not backing yet, so. They've had a number of sewage backups in a number of buildings, and Cory Anthony, the model Scott, is busy trying to really figure out what issues are, so they resolve them. Outside of South Ave, there was the...if you've been there, the sidewalk was always kind of broken up, and then somebody had actually tripped and fell, so they did...they revamped...I didn't see if they did the whole thing, but they repaired the concrete sidewalk and some of the curbing and some of the, you know, areas you don't have to step off the curb, but it's easier to transition onto the road, so we took care of that. The Glenham and Sargent awnings, are they gonna be installed by the end of November? So I'm not sure if they're up yet, but he said by the end of November, that's good. And we had, he had the new entrance carpets around the high school, and the one in the athletic wing will have the Beacon Athletic Bulldog logo, and he also said that, I guess we're replacing the scoreboards for the basketball.
I think they're already done.
Basketball, and they're all LED, right, so they can, you know, conform, configure it to whatever they want, like for wrestling, too, I guess?
Yes.
Because we have big wrestling tournaments every year, so they took care of that. Some of the...we always have a roundtable for each of the members, so some of the things we're discussing as well, so just so you know, you know, Craig was asking about making sure our preparations for winter and snow, how they're going, and making sure we're ready for that. I know Kristen wanted, we wanted to look into, there's, even though the air conditioning for Rombauts, that one wing is in the Capitol plant, there are areas, other buildings, like like Lindell mentioned, to have some warm areas that we'll hopefully address in the future, but, you know, there may be some other sustainable types of residue solutions, whether it be some kind of shades with reflective, you know, so when the sun hits it, we can, you know, it doesn't heat up as much, so we really wanna look at sustainable alternative solutions as well. And, you know, I'm big on safety, and I have, you know, suggested, I know Anthony's gonna look at safety suggestion boxes around the schools, so if, you know, people see something that, you know, may be a tripping hazard or something, you know, rusting, that they could put a suggestion into, so we can take care of it right away before somebody gets hurt. And our next meeting is on, like I said, December sixth, at seven p.m.
Seven.
Yep, and that's it.
Thank you for the thorough report. Mike? Meredith?
The most recent curriculum committee meeting was on Wednesday. I actually missed it, so I was gonna ask Cecilia to give a report.
Go ahead, Cecilia.
Sure. So the committee met on Wednesday and worked on finalizing a more streamlined process for our teachers across all grade levels to be able to submit new course proposals for consideration. We talked about the timelines aligning, so that it would both inform our budget planning process into the months of January and February, as well as be able at the high school level for the curriculum committee to be able to give feedback and preliminary approvals for new course offerings, so that's included in a timely fashion with the updates for the high school course catalog. In addition to that, we talked about setting up guidelines, and so this was just discussion items, and then we'll be follow-up at the next meeting. Mr. Wright's leading the charge based on some of that feedback, but guidelines for each of the departments, as well as grade-level curriculum teams, for a...how to go about reviewing and requesting new instructional media, so for us to be able to have a set of guidelines and operating protocols for what departments find are necessary considerations for text, for digital, or supplementary learning tools. And the next meeting of the curriculum committee is set for December twentieth.
Hope that's a holiday party that late.
I think we'll deal with it a little bit.
Alright.
Also, I attended the most recent Lenham Mills Chevron meeting.
Um, also I attended the most recent, um, Len and Mills Chevron meeting. It was again a full house there, lots of questions. I actually had to leave before it was over because I had to make to the diversity meeting. So I, I'm not exactly sure, this was the final meeting for their design charrette process. Um, it seemed like it left the community with a lot of questions, more than feeling like anything had been settled. So, um, I will check in with the liaison and give a report on what, what the next step is there, uh, by the next meeting. And, um, yeah, I also want to say the mural is awesome. I just, I ran into Jeanette Lynch, um, over at teacher conferences. And she told me that Joe Pimental was actually a student of hers over at John J High School. So I thought that was a nice connection. Um, and she had his artwork all over her room already, so obviously she's a big fan. Um, and I think that, oh, and the, yeah, the play was fantastic. And I just wanted to mention, there were some concerns about the sound in the past. And, um, two community members helped, uh, work that out. It's just like some crossed wires and the sound was crystal clear. You could understand the kids so well. And so, um, another example of community helping to make it a really great end product.
Great, thank you. Anthony?
The next, uh, techn, technology committee meeting is November 28th. And the next diversity committee is, uh, December 14th. We just had a diversity committee on the 15th of, uh, this month, which was last week. And, uh, the, uh, it was, uh, the main, um, the main thing we talked about was, uh, the diversity goal the district has. And, uh, it was, uh, broken out into, uh, three pieces. Uh, Cecilia talked about the increased staff diversity. Uh, Sheena spoke about, um, potential strategies for culture, awareness, quality and safety. And, uh, Brian Solish, uh, talked about potential strategies for eliminating barriers. And this, uh, it was, uh, a lot discussed, a lot of ideas. Um, and at this time there, there are ideas and, and, uh, discussions were very well received, um, by, um, by the public. So I'd like to thank, um, Dr. Landau, Cecilia, Sheena and Bryant for their presentation on that. The, um, I did have, I also wanted to mention that I didn't make, I, I found out that the, um, five Beacon High School students represented our district area old state for, uh, uh, music festival. So I wanted to congratulate them. Um, I also saw the Cinderella play and, uh, my favorite part was the, uh, the magical dress change. So I'd like to give, uh, Julian Warner, uh, kudos for, for the, uh, for the dress, um, uh, for the dresses. Actually, I think, uh, there was two changes. And, uh, I have a question actually for the board. What, I, I came across this, um, 2014 Municipal Innovations Exchange Summit by NISBA and Nikon with an M. Uh, it's kind of like a collaboration, well, it says here, collaboration between and among school districts and local governments. Uh, it's something that we, we had talked about before. And, uh, I, I'd be more than happy to discuss it more, better on the, on an agenda for next meeting, next board meeting. Uh, but now that the elections and the city council are done and, uh, they take office in January, maybe we can start talking about, uh, a summit of our own. Um, I'm not ready to talk this, uh, I mean, personally I'm ready to talk to the city yet. I think we should talk among ourselves, see what type of topics we want to talk to them about and then poll them to see what topics they want to talk about. So, um, that's something that I would like to suggest and then put on, uh, a future board meeting agenda.
Would you want to name it, discussion on topics to meet with city council about?
Well, it sounds like there's, what is it, what do they call it? The, um,
They called it a municipal innovations exchange summit. This was a, an effort back in 2014 by NISBA and Nikon.
That just sounds very, very positive and they're great.
So why is it called a beacon municipal?
Yeah, we could steal the name. So, um, yeah, so we could tailor it to our, to our needs. Uh, we don't have to follow NISBA's example, um, but, um, it's something I wanted to throw out there. You know, I would volunteer to, to take the lead if, if needed to, uh, to kind of poll everyone for ideas and stuff. But I guess we can have a discussion on a future board.
Can I write on this?
Yeah.
Georgia's instructing us to make sure there's no fine print on stealing the name. She's keeping us compliant.
I was giving it to Kelly just so we could put it as a new topic for discussion. All right, that's live. Thank you Anthony. Phil?
Yes, I attended the, uh, the high school capital project meeting and, uh, one of the, the first public capital project meeting. Uh, there was a log charter at the high school, one probably could have combined with PTA, so they were there for that anyway. But, uh, both, both, uh, groups of people that came were engaged and asked lots of questions. And, uh, but I think overall the tone was, was, uh, positive. Uh, I think people looked for information, but I didn't think, or I didn't hear anybody say that they didn't think, uh, anything in the project wasn't the, so I think that was a positive sign. So that was good. Um, I also attended the Cinderella play, so, you know, once again, I'll just echo everybody else, it was great. Uh, kudos to the, uh, the students, the teachers, staff and, and parents that will help. Uh, I do want to mention one thing, um, live music, which I think is really important. I, I much prefer it over canned. Uh, my high school, um, the students used to do the, the, all the music. We had a pretty advanced music program. But I certainly think that there, uh, are probably some of our students here who are capable. I mean, they, I'm, I'm assuming they're doing mostly the first chair parts, but there's usually second and third chair parts for these plays. And, you know, that, that would easier as, as you go down in the chair. And I assume that our seniors, especially those who are going to college for instrumental performance, should be capable of, of doing it. And even if it's just an augmentation to the existing professionals that are there, I think would be good. Good experience, also it's something on their resume if they're applying to a college, having something like that in their background, um, would be good too. So I think it's something that we should look at for our music program to see which, which of our students, uh, are, are capable of maybe helping out in, in those kinds of situations as well.
Thank you. Kenny?
So public relations, um, we didn't meet this time, but the surveys are, um, in, in terms of the computers. We were having them placed in other areas throughout the community. And so we're just waiting for those to come back in. Is that right?
Yeah, I think if you want, we can try to schedule, it seems like other committees are being scheduled. That's second week in the summer. So if you want to do that week, we'll, we'll be ready.
I'll take, I'll take a look and then.
Okay. 14?
No, I don't see that. And then, um, I attended my first safety meeting, so I was so excited to be there. Fortunately I had to double dip that day with work, um, but it was, it was, I, I enjoyed myself. Um, they talked about, uh, updating the security systems throughout all the buildings. So I love the fact that everything is gonna just be about all the buildings at the same time. Um, that's, um, people accessing the building. Uh, they talked about looking into cameras and, um, security systems, enhancing them in places that need to be enhanced. And so it seems like the ball is already rolling on these things. So I think the meeting just allowed us to, um, pull things together. Um, there was some safety drills in the community. Uh, I thought that administrators were very proactive in getting that message out. Um, they talked about like the plans that they have, why they can't share them with the community, but seem to be working on those things, or have them already existed, but working to actually improve, um, pictures and diagrams of buildings, um, making sure that those are, um, available and clear so that people, um, trying to access the building to support them, um, know where things are at. They talked about radios, um, and I think just training people on radios. Am I right? Like something about radios, but?
It's an increase in radios and so we have to have them.
And I was like, and then I think, you know, I don't know radios. I think I left them on like radios. So, so that was like looking at that, that was good. And, um, the district-wide, um, safety plan, um, again, Dr. Landau's already began to, uh, get that plan, uh, moving along. And so there's a plan to actually produce something to the board, um, I think the end of January. So, you know, the good news is, is that, um, these things are already being done, um, behind the scenes. So that's, that's important to know. And the next meeting is on January the 8th at 9:00 a.m.
On the 18th.
Jan, huh? Why is not the 18th?
2018.
Yeah, did I say 17th?
No, I was just saying it's on the 8th.
Um, it's on the 18th.
December 18th.
Oh, 18.
Or January 18th?
January 17th.
Got it, I blew it up.
Right, I'm so worried he deserves that.
18th.
I understand.
All right.
Um, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Hopefully everybody enjoys the time with their family. I think for the board members, it's well deserved time. Uh, don't think about any school business. And go on and enjoy the time with your family, watch a little football, eat some, uh, Thanksgiving feast. I did attend a, a class event in one of my classes in Walco. And, um, it was a 12, 1, 3 class. And the students researched what they ate for the first Thanksgiving. And so I was amazed to know that they ate, uh, goose, lobster and codfish. So I thought that was pretty interesting. Um, I thought it was always turkey, so they caught me something, so it was pretty. I said, "How come you're putting on a Thanksgiving feast and you don't have lobster?" And they said the budget didn't allow it. So enjoy the time with your families. Um, I just want to give kudos out to the teachers, um, for their parent teacher conferences. I thought they were very well run. It's tough with the time constraints, but they were able to meet and articulate and, uh, speak knowledgeably about my children at least. Um, it seemed like the vibe through the, um, schools that I attended, that the parents were relatively happy with the information that they were hearing and how this being presented. Um, I know that the, uh, at the elementary, um, for mine, both my sons, they had the, um, report card, uh, memo available to all the parents, so that was nice to see. So I had the correlation between 195 and the fours and stuff. So I just want to say kudos to the teachers and the building principals for, uh, welcoming everybody. Uh, they were always at the door welcoming all the parents and stuff, so good job to our staff. And I really enjoyed the presentation of the check for a student. I think it goes, shows what our employees do to go above and beyond and how, how kind of hard they are, so that was touching to me. All right, um, we have no unfinished business, um, so it moves us to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda for the support of education, make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda, may so indicate an item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there anything from the consent agenda any, uh, board member would like pulled?
10.07 and 10.08. 10.07 is?
Hold on, hold on. 10.07, 10.08, Craig?
10.07, yeah.
The same?
Same, same.
It's been already pulled.
10.06.
10.06. Hearing no other items, I'm asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 10.06, 10.07 and 10.08.
Second.
Bill, Anthony? Is there any comments or questions for agenda, uh, agenda items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried now. I need a motion to accept agenda item 10.07.
Motion to approve 10.07.
That's Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Georgia, comments and questions? Anthony?
Two questions. Is there any, uh, spending that has to be completed by the end of 2017 calendar year?
Emery?
No.
No?
We run our fiscal year, so it would be June.
Thank you. Uh, second question is, uh, the budget transfer report has, uh, budget transfers above 5,000. Um, and the policy says we have to approve them. The way the agenda item is worded is that we're approving the report of the transfers. Are we actually approving the transfers as well with the motion?
You are approving the transfers, that's, um, part of the policy. The transfers have been done, so to run the business office in an efficient way, they're done. But the detail goes to the board and it's an approval process along with the treasurer's report.
So 10.07, we're approved the transfers as well?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one question on the, um, budget transfer report. On the first page, reference number 967, where it talks about, um, to cover costs of negative budget codes. So I, I know that in the past we've kind of been, it's been raised up that we're, you know, are we allowing things to go, you know, be overspent before we actually are covering them in our, in our budget or?
To, to, uh, put on a purchase order and get it approved through InVision, you cannot be negative. I'm looking at some of the codes that are on there, they are payroll codes. So they're, they're just, uh, transfers between payroll codes. So for example, um, I, I can use a, an example of teaching assistants. So we break them up between regular ed and special ed. And some people change assignments, so they may get paid out of the wrong code. Um, or they're budgeted in a different code and then we transfer them in there. But we, we can't overspend a code, um, but payroll for it to be pending, we'd have to do the transfer for it to actually go through. Cause it's a process of posting it to the account.
Okay, so these are payroll code records.
Some of the, some of the, most of those in that area are payroll codes. The only code that I would see in there, um, that are not is 1621, 400 and 450. Um, 450 is materials and supplies, but in 1620 you have multiple material and supplies, cause we break it out more. And we're trying to be specific so that when we do the budget going forward, especially since we have a new director, we're trying to be a little bit more specific. So that's why we're transferring back and forth.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah. In trying to read those reports, I see a lot of codes, you know, A0673-15 or something like that, which is essentially unintelligible unless you have a, in some cases it's obvious, in other cases it's not. I think it would be good if we had a, uh, a sheet that lists all those codes and we could find it someplace conveniently.
If you look in the treasurer's report at the back, you'll see all of the appropriation status reports that have all of the budget codes and the description in each. So those are the chart of accounts for a regular profit company, that's what you would use. Um, these are dictated by the state, so we have no, um, play with them. They're, they're specific to the departments. But in the treasurer's report underneath, if you wanted to see the detail, we have every single fund, um, our treasurer attaches them. So if you wanted to see what a budget code is, you can look right on the treasurer's report, the report right underneath the budget transfers. So all the details there.
So where does that appear in the report? Is that the?
If you look right.
The bottom, the bottom part of it there?
If you look, if you click on, you have the budget transfers on one. If you look at the treasurer's report, if you click on that and you go to the, the very end of the treasurer's report, it has all of the appropriation status reports on there. And it'll have a, a verbal description of the budget codes.
Thank you.
Never made it all the way to the end, how great.
It's a lot of pages.
I'm not sure what I was looking at. I, I didn't have enough time to really kind of decode that, uh, format. I don't think I've seen that report, um, in this format before. And we see these, these reports that come on the, the audit reports, the, uh, on a regular basis. But sometimes when we see a new report, it's longer than the others. And you try to keep scrolling down and down and down, you run out of time.
Well, the, um, the audit reports are, um, more general in nature. So if you're going to the audit committee, you're going to see it in a more general nature. But the treasurer's reports are exactly the same every month, they haven't changed. So the budget transfers in the treasurer's reports have all of the detail. Um, cause I know I've gotten some questions from other board members about, um, balances in those accounts.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried now. Any motion for 10.08?
Motion to approve 10.08.
Anthony? Is there a second?
Second.
Georgia, comments and questions?
I just want to clarify that the, uh, the 1986 tractor is not being offered up to competitive bid, but it's being disposed, so I just want to clarify what's, uh, what, um, whether it's going to be, uh, bidded out or, um, for anybody else who wants that 86 tractor.
They, they need to be surplus from our records first and then we will put it in the newspaper and do a close bid process on both of those vehicles. We've done it similar when we, um, dispose of cars in the transportation department. We've done that in the past as well.
Okay, cause the way the, the way the, the top, the thing is worded in the agenda, it's, it's, um, only the 1999 Ford F550 is being disposed in competitive bid. You have disposed competitive bid and you only have the 1999 Ford F550. But above that, you've mentioned the tractor that's going to be surplus. It's not part of, I don't know if that was intentional, was typo or?
I'm not sure, but it, they're both going to be. I'm not sure, but it, they're both going to be.
They're both going to be in a competitive bid?
Yep. We're not allowed to do anything besides that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Should we amend the language, the way it's written on the, on the agenda?
I understood. If you want clarification, do you have word language? How do you want to read the word?
Just move the 86 Ford tractor after the colon of competitive bid.
So you make a motion to do that?
Yeah, make a motion to make that typographical and...
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, nay. No. Kelly, for the purpose, can you please move that down to underneath, to be disposed to competitive bid? Thank you. Now I needed the motion to approve 10.08.
Six.
Six. Motion to approve 10.08.
No, wait, we didn't vote on 10.08.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I made a motion.
Once in my life, once in my life sometimes.
I already made a motion.
Yeah, I know we need to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, nay. No. Now, I need a motion for 10.06. I need a motion to approve 10.06. Any second?
Second.
Anthony, comments or questions? Mike? On the report for November 15th, I have two questions actually. On the third page of the check number 26941, Bollinger Specialty Group, $20,000. Just wondering what that is for.
That's our student accident policy.
Okay, so it's an insurance?
It's insurance. So that's the secondary insurance. So if a student gets hurt here, that's the secondary insurance that comes, that goes, that kicks in after a parent's medical insurance. So if we have athletes or any kind of student injury here.
Sounds like one.
Oh, Bollinger.
So is this an annual payment or is it monthly payment?
It's an annual payment.
Okay. Just hadn't seen it before. My second question is at the bottom of the fourth page, the note, check 26973 invoice. Does, when I look at 26973, it doesn't seem like it would apply.
267.
26.
Oh, to WB Mason?
Right.
It's probably included in there, because that would be a large payment. WB Mason would have multiple invoices in it. I can, I...
Says, uh...
See, because you have all the other continued on top of it.
He's complaining about the invoice, not the check.
What I'm saying is that when I look at 26973, invoice 170528. It didn't match the, yeah, wait, didn't match. Well, that's a PO number.
The check, the 26973 is the actual check to WB Mason for 5,000, 498, 52.
Okay.
The other checks' numbers are voided, because all of the detail comes on the top part of the stub. So when you're paying all of those invoices together, it actually will void out those check numbers. That's why you're seeing it that way. So that note is probably a small part of all of the invoices that are in there. Do you understand?
Mm-hmm. Okay, I understand. There's no way for me to verify it, I guess, by looking at this.
Right. We do, WB Mason is on the state contract.
Okay.
So we do all of our paper buying and all of our office supplies to WB Mason. So that's, that's a multiple invoice.
So the, so the note is, is correct, is accurate?
It's something that's included in that whole big payment.
All right, thank you.
How often do we get billed by WB Mason?
Oh, I don't know that. I would think as soon as we get an order, we get an invoice.
Could we save money if we save paper?
I'm sorry?
Could we save money if we save paper?
What do you mean, save paper? I'm not sure.
Yeah, we don't need that much paper to order from WB Mason if we didn't use so much paper.
What's the point, Anthony? That's, yes, we know the answer to that. You can save money if you don't order as much paper. Yes. Right?
Well, I, I was just talking about trying to save some money. Turf Grass Technologies?
That's to aerate, fertilize mainly our soccer field that we are going to make turf. So it would be something we would save if we changed the field to turf.
We are planning to make it turf. Still need people to go out there and be sure it happens.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, nay. No. I need a motion to, for addendum item 112017B, where it says, "Be resolved at the board here or I approve the placement of employee number 3631 on paid administrative leave during dependency of disciplinary investigation beginning November 17, 2017."
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You gotta say opposed, don't just say...
Opposed.
Eight, one. I need a motion for resolution 112017C, where it's be resolved that the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District does hereby affirm the superintendent's decision and suspension of student 111517 issued pursuant to an educational, an educational law 3214 superintendent's hearing. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Bill, is there a second?
Second.
Meredith, comments or questions?
Just want to make comment that it's not an easy decision.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Eight to one. And that was Mike. All right. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
Georgia, there's a second by Kristen. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, nay. No. Thank you, everybody. Have a good Thanksgiving.